The Town Council meeting of October fourteenth has been on order. We're going to start our meeting as usual with plectilees. Now I ask Town Council member Jonathan Hampton to flag the plectile.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor President Linda Vanny will now give a starting presentation.
If everyone would please bow their head. Dear heavenly fathers, thank you for bringing us together this evening to serve the citizens of our town. Thank you for the many blessings you have bestowed upon us. As we listen and discuss important matters, pray us wisdom, respect, and unity. Guide us with understanding as we move forward in our work and projects for the good of our community. In your name we pray. Amen.
All right, we do our introductions. Let me start over here on the left. Before I do, our Town Attorney, Ashley Anderson, is joined by Speaker Van and shall be in on the entire meeting. Let me start over here on the left. Jeff Bacon, Deputy Clerk.
Leo Buckler, Town Clerk.
John Norrie.
Keith Clay.
Lynn Williams Devaney.
Lee Haywood.
Janelle Robinson.
Jonathan Hampton.
Justin Snyder, Plenary Director.
Twig Ramos, Town Mayor.
And now we go to the adoption of the agenda. Does anyone want to make a motion on the adoption of the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I would like to amend this agenda and take off number eleven, which is the closed session. It's my understanding we don't have anything to discuss in that tonight.
So does that have a motion?
Well, I'll make the motion. I was told there might be another one. Yes.
I'd like to move seven C to nine E.
Seven C to nine E. I would like to amend my motion, my motion, that we, in addition to taking number eleven closed session off this agenda, we will move seven C to nine E.
Any others? All right, so your motion is to amend the agenda to take seven C and move it to nine E and to delete eleven from the agenda completely, the closed session, remove that completely. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Mr. Mayor, I second that.
And who is that?
It was Keith.
Keith said his motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of the changes to the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those aye. Hearing none, those changes have been made. We're going to go to announcements and recognitions. Does anybody have it?
Mr. Mayor, I have some announcements I'd like to share. First of all, I wanted to give a warm and loving shout out to Jeanette Daughery, especially and staff for holding such a wonderful touch of truck event. I think there were over two thousand people there. It was amazing to see all the, all the aged kids running around from the little teeny toddlers to even middle schoolers and that type of thing. But it was wonderful. We had some new vehicles there that we did not have before. We had just a mixture of stuff. We had a little train ride going through the whole event, which was fabulous for the children. So Jeanette, you outdid yourself and we all really appreciate your hard work.
Everybody doesn't know who to know. She's standing in the back of the room. So somewhere tonight if you can make yourself known to her and her partner, that'd be great.
I also would like to thank Ms. Jen Kelly. She is our Finance Officer for being on top of Vandera and the AMY as far as grants and requesting their reimbursements. So what she has done, and it was actually deposited today, is it was two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars and thirty-two cents for Vandera to get reimbursed. And then for the AMY, it was sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars worth. The deposit total was three hundred and one thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars and thirty-two cents. And thank you for being on top of that. We really appreciate it. These projects are definitely on their way. Let's see, also just a couple of events coming up. The Summerfield Fire Department is having a trunk or treat on Friday, October the thirty-first from five to eight. And all the proceeds are going to benefit the hangman responder foundation. So we'll head out that way on the thirty-first. Just a reminder that election day is Tuesday, November fourth. And early voting, I believe, starts the sixteenth at Burn Hill.
Sixteenth at the courthouse, twenty-third.
Okay, thank you for that correction. On Tuesday, November eleventh, Town Hall will be closed for Veterans Day. Therefore, our regular scheduled Town Council meeting will be held on the following day, which is Wednesday, November twelfth. It's on the calendar on the website. Also, due to the Thanksgiving holiday, the following committees have been moved. The trails are open space. It's going to be on Wednesday, November nineteenth. The Board of Adjustment is Thursday, November twentieth. The Industry Committee is Thursday, November twentieth. I believe the Board of Adjustments meets in this building and the History meets at Town Hall, so they can have the meeting on the same night. And also coming up on Saturday, November twenty-second, is our Christmas tree lighting. And it will be at five-thirty at Saff, which is the Summerfield Athletic Park. So that's the park off of Highway two-twenty North. Last year it was wonderful. And so please come out and join us for that. That is it?
Anybody else? I do want to remind people that there is a candidate forum coming up this Thursday here in this facility. It's at six o'clock. And all the Summerfield Town Council candidates have agreed to participate. And it starts at six o'clock this Thursday. So if you haven't heard of candidates, I have to say, now that would be the time to do it. And I do want to give out a shout out to a couple of the people in here. Prezzy's is a new business that opened up at the Golden Antiques Shopping Center. They do jewelry and other nice things like, thanks to the ladies. And she asked us if we could attend her grand opening. And I believe Mr. Hamilton was there with attendance, Robinson and Mr. Doggett. And it was a very nice event and it was just kind of a business that we would like to change to Summerfield. Everybody had a great time, so I'm going to thank them for coming. And that's all I've got to say. So I guess we'll move on. Anybody else? All right, we're going to move on to public comments. And this is limited to three minutes per speaker. And if you signed up and you're wanting to speak to the public hearing, the resoning, this is not for that. This is for general comments. And we have a separate session for the resoning hearing. So first up is Teresa Perryman. Teresa Perryman? Can you state your name and address?
Teresa Perryman, seven four zero one, Green Lawn Drive, Summerfield. I want to let everybody know that I'm running for Town Council seat. I have the experience that I think needs up here is, and I ran from 2017 to 2021. My past history and votes have showed that I am a fiscal conservative person. I've been advocating for Summerfield since nineteen ninety-five. I've been here, born, raised here. I've been advocating for this town that I call home. Twenty-seventeen, we created a group called Sagard Summerfield, and we got over two thousand signatures on this petition to protect our water. I have been coming to the town meetings regularly, and I have attended or read the minutes from our committees. I was the only one who voted no in 2021 to high density in our UVO. And I am definitely against imminent zoning over this trail. And there's just a lifetime resident here, and I feel like I know what this town, our part of the citizens, of what the community needs and wants. And what I think protecting us from, to keep it rural, is the water study done for this town. A lot of people don't know there was a water study done, but it said the one unit or that we could hold one house per one acre. And I think that's what we need to stick to. That got changed in 2021 when they, the rest of the council put higher density in the UVO. But I was the only one who voted against it. And I would like to vote again November fourth. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perryman. Next, we have, all right, I might say respectfully pan to the corner. Turn it off.
I don't want to complain about anything. Lynn said a couple of months ago something about volunteers that kind of triggered something. So I'm here tonight to ask Summerfield to do something I think that would be really, really nice. I'd like for Summerfield to recognize Trudy Rether in servicing the water. Trudy was truly, truly a friend of Summerfield. She worked in the Trails and Open Space Committee beginning in 2012 until her death in 2024. I think she was an original member of the zoning and, well, now planning board and until she was passed to Stephanie last year. She's been a real advocate and supporter of the farmer's market. She has volunteered and supported Founders Day and, by also, she had a tractor there. She's advocated and supported the efforts of Piedmont Land Conservancy. She's worked with environmental groups of the efforts to clean up the whole river. And she even visited everybody in the whole river to try to help them to understand how to be a good neighbor of the river. She's even helped clean up the roadways. She served on the Jefferson County Open Space Committee to establish the Ridge Walk Preserve. She was a science teacher. And even her own property is planted to support mona butterflies. Trudy was just, she was just really a very kind, very wonderful person. And so what I'm asking is that they serve this scholarship, be established in her name, recognizing services to the community. The scholarship, I would like to see it go to a high school graduate, high school senior who's a resident of Summerfield. And the amount of the scholarship, I would like for it to be five hundred dollars. And I will fund for scholarship. After that, I would hope that the town will pick up that circus award, scholarship, and continue it for a long, long time. In the same amount, but at least five hundred dollars or more if they chose to. Thank you.
Ma'am, thank you for that. You do reside at sixty-eight under Brooklyn?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ryan Wayne?
Brian Wayne, four seven one one, Prestle Field Road here in Summerfield. I also attended the touch truck. It was a great event. All those smiling faces, it was incredible. What I'm looking for is to recognize the maintenance crew that was there. We all went down to the playground about halfway through. And there was a mother there with three kids, fifty, oldest was eight, four and two or something like that. Seven point three in the afternoon, they all disappeared. She was calling mother, my friend, and she couldn't find her. I remember when I walked in, a bunch of our people were wearing radios. So I went and found the first one, had me quit. I said, listen, there's a mom, can't find her daughter. And I never saw a bunch of guys hounded after so quickly. That maintenance crew did. The girl was in the bathroom. She wouldn't go in there, but you can understand, you know, the concern. But I will tell you, I just want to say the maintenance crew did a great job. I don't know if you guys have policies or procedures or something like that when it happens, but it appeared to me they did. They did a great job.
All right. Kyle Stalls?
Kyle Stalls, seven eight two three, Wilson Farm Road. I'll address the crowd instead. My name's Kyle Stalls. I am a council candidate at this hall. One of the four folks running. I've been knocking on doors, I've been handing out flyers. It's been a time. But just a little bit about me, so you'll know something about my name on the ballot. I am, I've been living out of Summerfield for two years, my wife and my two children. We came out here and we, you know, absolutely love it. I work in civil engineering. I'm educated as a landscape architect. I've been working in that field for quite some time, engineering and surveying. And I originally got involved in, I guess, local politics, politics in general, last summer fighting with the annexation, which included a number of trips up to Raleigh, knocking on legislators' doors, getting meetings, arguing sometimes, trying to make the case for what I considered the insistence of our town. And I can't really explain why I got so passionate about it, but I did. I enjoyed advocating for the town, and I'd really like to do that in a more official capacity. So that's why my name is on the ballot this fall. I'd also say I am on the planning board. And as everybody knows, the planning board did find this issue that's coming up tonight for the hearing to be in accordance with the comprehensive plan. And I just want to address the council at this point to say, you know, there was a stereotype in Raleigh that kept getting thrown back in my face that our, that really the whole population of our town was unreasonable, we wouldn't work with anybody, we were just difficult and very negative. And I want to say that the planning board meeting that we had in which we heard the upcoming case, I think that meeting proved all those stereotypes wrong because it was a packed meeting, it was tense, but the residents brought reasonable concerns and presented them in a courteous and clear way so that those of us on the board could actually understand, could think through things. You just couldn't ask for a more well-run meeting. And it all came down to the residents of our community who were willing to come out and be reasonable and completely nix that unfair characterization that I heard over and over again. So this is a big project. This is, and if it does move forward, I just really strongly encourage council to continue listening to residents if it moves forward, continue to hear their concerns and to really include them in the process because they're here and they're willing to be part of it. So, and you can't say that about all communities. So we've got a great group of citizens here, and I was just really impressed. So that's all I have. My phone number is two five two nine four five seven eight two five. I've got a Facebook as well if you want to reach out with any questions or concerns.
Forty minutes, three seconds. That's awesome. Next, I think that's it. Does anybody else would like to speak? Or once, twice? We're going to move on. We're now going to the public hearing of our meeting tonight, and that is a rezoning issue, RZ dash oh two dash two oh two five. All right, I'm going to need a little bit of guidance here. Are we, is that?
Mr. Mayor, you'll need a motion to go into the public hearing. A motion to exit once you've got it.
I'll entertain a motion to go into this public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we move into the public hearing, RZ zero two dash two zero two five.
Does Ms. Devaney make the motion? Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Hamilton. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of going into the public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Hearing none, we are now in public hearing. And for that, I guess what I need to know, I'm still learning, folks, so bear with me. Is anybody going to, I guess, describe the acres, that sort of thing? I mean, the acres.
Mr. Mayor. Town Planner.
Town Planner, okay.
We'll lead all.
Justin Snyder?
Yes, sir.
Want to introduce you as our Town Planner, and he's going to fill everybody in on the ins and outs of this, of this resoning here. The parcel, your question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And if you're not ready, it's a long staff report because there's a lot to it, so I'll try to get through it as quickly as I can. So this is a resoning request, RZ zero two twenty twenty-five. It's a request to rezone plus or minus twenty-one point four four acres of property located at four six zero four US two twenty, four six two two US two twenty, fifteen ten, North Carolina one fifty west, fifteen eight North Carolina one fifty west, fourteen twenty North Carolina one fifty west, and fourteen twenty-eight North Carolina one fifty west. The request is to go from RS thirty, which is a single-family residential, to condition a zone of business. These are Gilbert County tax parcel numbers, one four six, one seven four, one four five nine nine nine, one four six zero zero zero, one four six zero zero one, and also a thirteen point five one acre portion of parcel one four five nine nine five. And so this is located at the northeast intersection of Highway US two twenty and North Carolina one fifty west. And the purpose of the resoning is to allow the applicants to develop this portion of the track into a retail shopping center to support future residential and commercial growth in this region. This intersection is a prime commercial or mixed-use development zone, and the commercial development is supported by the comprehensive plan. As part of the application, the applicant has proposed several use conditions, and those have been voluntarily agreed to in writing by the applicant. And the following uses would be prohibited from the site if this is approved and if council agrees. Those uses would be agricultural production, forestry, single-family dwellings, town-level dwellings, proprietary sorority houses, community colleges, colleges, drunk and alcohol treatment facilities, clubs and lodges, houses of worship, psychiatric treatment facilities, ambulance services, transportation terminals, bowling centers, skating rakes, theaters, go-kart tracks, bingo games, coin-operated amusement, school hall, fortune teller, funeral home, furniture repair, gunsmith, lawnmower repair, equipment tool and rental, laundromat, manufactured home sales, taxidermy, automotive paint and body, boat sales and service, RV sales and service, transmission shops, automobile sales, hotels, electric motor repair. And then the Town Council will have the final authority to approve or deny this request. And because this is a conditional zoning decision, the town may also impose additional reasonable and related conditions to development provided the applicant does agree to the new right. Should the applicant not agree to those additional conditions, then the zoning conditions will either require removal or modification for the zoning agreement. All right. Existing land uses on the property, the property is currently either vacant or developed with single-family homes. Surrounding land uses to the north are single-family residential. To the south, single-family residential and commercial land separated by North Carolina one fifty west. And you can see these on the map on the screen in front of you. To the east is vacant and single-family residential. And then to the west is commercial land separated by US two twenty. There are no inventory of distorted resources on our case of subject property, nor are there any cemeteries known in this area. Fire protection district would be Summerfield Fire, and the site is approximately zero point eight miles from Summerfield Fire Station number nine. As of right now, because of the lack of public services available, the site would be served by some sort of private law and civic system. The lay-in and soil surrounding development would inevitably be evaluated and approved by Gilbert County Environmental Health as part of the site plan review process. Transportation, existing conditions, both US two twenty and North Carolina one fifty are major thoroughfares by the adopted collective street and thoroughfare plan. As far as proposed improvements, pollinate development, all of our improvements will be subject to both fire code and North Carolina DOT regulations. North Carolina DOT has been working staffed and developed on the traffic impact analysis. The recommendations that come from that traffic impact analysis will be required improvements determined by North Carolina DOT. And that's, again, as part of the site plan approval process. Average annual daily trips, according to the twenty twenty-three traffic volume out from North Carolina DOT, Highway one fifty had an average annual daily trips of seventy-five hundred at its intersection with US two twenty. And US two twenty had an average annual daily trips of seventeen thousand at the intersection with North Carolina Highway one fifty. There are no impacts anticipated exclusively based on the application for commercial development. The topography is gently sloping to severely sloping, going from south to north towards a map stream feature. There is a resource map that is included in council packets. There is no regulated one hundred year flood plan on the property for the affected farm channel. There are no over-mapped wetlands on the northern portion of the track for the national weapons inventory. Property is not located in a large supply watershed. It is in the NDEES watershed area. It is not in a watershed critical area. Again, there is a map stream on the northern portion of the track for the USDS, it's all surveyed maps of Gilbert County. Streams are required to be buffered per Article nine of the nearby development ordinance. The land use analysis for this site, the Summerfield Comprehensive Plan of two thousand and ten has a recommendation of commercial development and mixed use for the site. Policy area ones, appropriate limited commercial development has common objective. The town of Summerfield shall prefer commercial development that reflects the feel, ambience, and charm of the small rural community. Commercial development should be located, designed, and scaled complement rather than detract from residential development forms, and should enhance existing commercial areas. Development policies that are applied to this proposal, policy one point seven, to minimize automobile dependency and to enhance occupancy and social interaction, should be designed in small scale. Small businesses may be located within convenient walking or biking distance into residential areas, particularly when planned as part of newly developed area of mixed-use development. Staff response says, posed design as well as fact development must appear to be seen in quarter overlay requirements will mean that proposed development is harmful to the surroundings surrounding community and/or commercial and residential developments. The location of prior intersection of two of Summerfield's main thoroughfares supports development of the commercial and/or mixed use of the neighborhood. Additionally, residential use is not appropriated nor desired by North Carolina DOT at an intersection of two major thoroughfares. Commercial mixed-use traffic generators with limited driveway cuts are the more desired development type. Policy one point eight, neighborhoods serving small businesses may also be considered for locations near and for the convenience of pre-existing residential areas, provided careful attention is given to compatible design type of business, adequate buffering, and other neighborhood protective factors. The general consensus of nearby residents has evidence at a properly held public hearing by town government would also need to be apparent. And staff's response that the proposal will enhance the area by creating neighborhood-oriented business opportunities as well as regionally attractive retail options to serve the entire town. Existing residential uses will be buffered per the ordinance, and additional buffering will be provided naturally due to the presence of map streams and weapons in accordance with the town's unified development ordinance requirements. Policy one point nine, larger-scale commercial development shall be directed to suitable locations away from residential areas that are likely protecting and enhancing property values. And staff's response to that is although not large-scale traditional census, it's large-scale for Summerfield. Its location and intersection of two highways within a partially developed commercial and mixed-use note creates ideal market for the type of development. Existing residential uses will again be buffered per the ordinance, and additional buffering will be provided naturally due to the presence of map streams and weapons in accordance with the town's unified development ordinance requirements. And staff believes this proposed action is reasonable in public interest because in a high-traffic area within a partially developed commercial building, or very small and large-scale commercial office uses are prevalent and will enable development in a manner consistent with unified development ordinance standards for commercial development within the established standard quarter overlays. The request does appear to be consistent with the Summerfield Comprehensive Plan, the information of appropriate limited commercial development, policy one point seven, one point eight, and one point nine, as enumerated in staff report land use analysis. Thus, if approved, a land use plan amendment would not be required. Staff is recommending approval of the request with conditions as established by the property owner's voluntarily right. The planning board also recommended unanimous approval of the request with following conditions agreed to by the applicant after July twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, planning board meeting. Those additional use conditions are as follows. No convenience stores or gas stations shall be permitted. No automobile service stations shall be permitted. No car washes shall be permitted. No car washes shall be permitted. No self-storage facilities shall be permitted. No tobacco or bacon shop shall be permitted. Additional development conditions proposed by the planning board. A fifty-foot undisturbed ventilated buffer, along with an eight-foot tall wooden privacy fence shall be provided adjacent to the existing residentially-zoned properties to the north of the proposed commercial area. And also, there shall be no connection from the site to Whiteville Drive. And that's all I've got.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Snyder. I guess now we'll go into the public comment portion. Is that correct? Yeah. And first on the list is Thomas Brady.
Mr. Mayor, before you do that, I'll do that to hear from the advocate.
Okay.
Okay. Hi, my name is Matt Falbener, I'm the owner of Summerfield Equities LLC, and I don't know if anybody's heard this before, so I'll repeat myself. I used to have a house in Henson Forest in Summerfield Farms. About eight years ago, my daughter moved up here with her son, and she adopted two children and moved out to Charlotte. So, I was a resident, part-time resident of Summerfield in the past. I identified this site probably seven years ago as the prime site for the grocery and shopping center. As a resident here, I was a little bit inconvenienced, like everybody is, that you don't have services close to us. I had to drive to Luigi's Pizza, or out to the Lowe's Center over there in Oak Hill. It's a little bit inconvenient for residents to have that, and I think Summerfield really needs a town center where people can congregate and meet their friends. Additionally, the commercial tax base is not going as fast as the residential tax base, and communities need balance for that. So, in hindsight, I think that this is a good project for Summerfield, it's a good project for the city of Summerfield, and I would love to have your support. I will add to, just in time, I said, I met with some of the people out of White survive, I agreed to put a burn on top of a fifty-foot setback, so there'd be a burn, and a fence on that because they should be, how nice the backyard was, how nice it is, and I agreed to, they should stay there. So, anyhow, appreciate your support. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. First up is Thomas Brady.
Justin, I have a site plan. Do you have the site plan that you projected?
Hold up here, hold up for a minute. Mr. Brady, will you? Will you recite, try to address this?
Just slide plan, one of the heads, the projected buildings, and keep going, keep going, keep going, gotta keep going. There, definitely. Keep scrolling, keep going, keep going a little better. Now, to the right. Good boy. Yeah, a little bit, and it will be good, I think. All right, good, hold that. Thanks. Good evening to the council of Southern Town of Summerfield. My name is Thomas Brady, and I've resided at 7400 Whiteville Drive in Elmer's Estates since 1989. I am now retired, but was originally professional engineer in Virginia, North Carolina. My position on the proposed rezoning being considered as even as an existing zoning should remain. This will allow construction of a restaurant or other appropriate commercial status along with additional residence. Everybody knows we need to do all the commercial construction and manufacturing coming. The site is perfectly suited for residence development and utilizing appropriate setbacks and buffers. Looking at the proposed traffic patterns and all that with the site plan, US 220, they actually had close traffic coming from the north, which means that it's going to be a left, that left turn lane that fills up all the time now anyway, to try to turn from south down US 220 on 2150. These left turn loops, as soon as you get through that left turn, then you gotta worry about the traffic that's going in and out of the district, including by Andy Walgreens, and then they went to cooperate to have another intersection there. The weird part about this is, and I know to most of you can't do this, but the co-congling of the residential and the commercial, there's already, if you see that on a 150 side, people will be turning in there, trying to turn left in the commercial area while everybody's kind of egress out of the suburbs. There's a big problem back there at the intersection, people will be stuck there not knowing whose way to go, and I realize that residents, residents need to have access to the shopping center, but it really complicates it when it's, you know, completely with all the traffic coming from 150. One thing that did come out of the planning commission, it wasn't a pro-offer thing, but the NC DOT for Justin has agreed to do a traffic analysis and check about the traffic signal at the intersection of US 220, and does possibly say, does possibly go into Elmer's Estates. Other issues that concern me are the lack of solid information regarding water and sewer services for both commercial and residential. Whistle in the back, the residents do not want to sit and crank fuel in their backyards. And what about the route coming, there's no way stone from commercial trucks using the resident, using that at night, and sometimes late in the middle of the night, and the interesting part is like getting away from the microphone. All these will probably have services in arrears that will be loading at night, and we, you know, here's, this is seventy feet, from elevation here to the elevation here is seventy-foot drop. You can have a buffer, and you can have a burn, but this thing just will fall off like crazy, and we'll lose any, lose any kind of reaction to that pretty quickly, and it's not going to, the fence will come down by the time it gets about here.
Mr. Brady, eight minutes, three minutes.
All the traffics will go off over that.
Thank you, sir.
You know, at least give us quick some answers.
That's three minutes, sir. Um, I'm gonna give them those. Everybody's only allowed three minutes. Thank you, sir. Brett Jordan.
Before I can get my appointment, Matt, our property?
Sure, well, your time's gonna start now, if that's...
This property right here in the corner.
Okay. And where do you live, Mr. Jordan?
My name is Brett Jordan, my wife Ashley and I live at 7487 Whiteville Drive, directly adjacent to the proposed rezoning site. Along with our neighbors and the house, our properties are uniquely and most directly impacted by this development. I email all council members with details of our position and concerns, hoping to give them your attention. I would also like to thank Mr. Falbener for coming out and visiting us and watching the property and listening to our concerns. With that said, we strongly oppose rezoning due to its incompatibility with our residential neighborhood, but also the change in position the city is in, resulting from the couch side out. If approved, we respectfully request protective conditions to safeguard our privacy, safety, property values, and environmental integrity. The proposed commercial site sits at a higher elevation directly behind our houses, a fifty-foot buffer and eight-foot wooden fence. Proposed zoning conditions are inadequate given the topography, where its council required a tall burning burn larger than allowed in the UDO, and for cyclone and noise mitigation, and a durable non-wood privacy fence atop the burn, along with vegetative screening. The burn effects height should be sufficient to obscure all our first-floor roof lines. These measures were agreed upon during a site visit with Mr. Falbener, but must be formally included in zoning conditions to ensure implementation. The regional contract takes several principles in the county UDO. Land use compatibility, a shopping center behind our homes disrupts the wooden low-density character of Elmer's Estates, not many neighborhoods are forested like ours. Traffic congestion, increased traffic in terms of 220 will compromise safety for residents entering and exiting Elmer's Estates. Infrastructure constraints, the site cannot responsibly support the scale of development proposed. The square footage of buildings, railways, parkings, sidewalks, setbacks, delivery docks, wells, wastewater treatment, and runoff mitigation, is a lot to frame into this small parcel. The property valuation preservation, rezoning will significantly impact our property values, and infringes prior council commitments and undermines homeowner trust. Environmental concerns are elevated rating, and competitive will worsen runoff, potentially threatening well water and the wetlands. We also oppose any proposed roadway or trail connected to White survive due to issue with trespassing, littering, and safety concerns, as well as potential disruption to system webbing. We support responsible growth, but this project's scale, elevation, proximity make it fundamentally incompatible with our neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Next, Mayor Brian Rose.
Instructor, did you go out to the first slide, please? Number one? First slide of this one. What's the last question? One show towers.
Yes.
Okay. I guess that. First of all, Brian Rose, officially William Brian Rose, I'm at 7491 Whiteville Drive. My wife and I have been here for twenty-three years. Mere sport runs right about here, and from here to here is a pretty significant drop-off as Mr. Brady mentioned earlier. So, first of all, good evening, council members and staff, thank you for your service to Summerfield and the city of South Carolina. Previous planning board meeting, my neighbors and I have several concerns with proposed development request. I would say we are not entirely opposed to the request. We would like to ask for some changes to the plan as reflected. Notably, there are concerns with water runoff and the waste of light pollution and potential contamination of well water. Personally, my family has experienced three flash flood events in the twenty-three years we've lived here. We need to compare compromise with current plans. We love Summerfield, we love Elmer's Estates, and we look peaceful and quiet nature of our community. We also recognize the challenges Summerfield faces with pressure to develop and pressure to retain our town charter. We also recognize the pressure you council members face to tie the balance, and so that's what I'm personally asking for tonight, is to tie the balance, here by our quest to balance the concerns of the community with the need of the developer. And I don't know formally how to make these requests, Justin, you can...
If you listen now, I can...
Extend even undisturbed natural buffer, that's our tree buffer, is the best noise and light pollution buffer you can have to at least one hundred feet, currently set fifty. Eight hundred foot buffer would do us all, and then the burn, Mr. Jordan mentioned, also would help the water. I think Justin mentioned the planning board meeting, that buffers like fences, whether they're wooden or stone, really help do a lot to reduce the waste and light pollution. So, hundred foot buffer would be our request, please ensure that the net water flow is east down Highway 150 versus one in the mere fourth. So, for this plan, the drop-off is here, if it goes in the mere fourth, it's going back up this way, and the potential flow does exist there. If we can get that net flow down this way, that would be our request, and I'm not sure how that happens because I'm not an engineer. And then lastly, during the site development oversight, maintain the integrity of and pure of the well water is something we would request, and I'm not sure how that happens, but that's a concern, a danger, just that runoff during the development may impact the purity of our well water.
Thank you, Mr. Rose.
Thank you for listening, thank you for your time.
Excuse me. Mark Dillon.
How you doing? My name is Mark Dillon, I live at 8900 Largewood Drive. I'm here with my in-laws, my in-laws are the people who own the property. Want to ask Mr. Planning Board, was there anything on there for kids to do at all, everything that you read off? Was there anything fun in that whole, that you read off for a kid?
I think that's subjective, but...
Yeah, I know that it's not. My next question is, on 220 right there, all these houses over here, how tall is the wall on the DOT wall?
Are you talking Garville?
Yeah, yeah, how tall's the parable?
Twenty feet? I don't think it's quite that high, I'd say it's closer to twelve.
That's it, Justin. They're worried about a fifty-foot wall, and it's, that one's only twenty-foot, and they look right there at it? So, my question is, I've worked here my whole life. The other morning, I come out, I come out 150, ate a lot, 150, there's never any traffic there. That is one of the biggest complaints. There's no traffic at that intersection. This afternoon, when I came through there at two o'clock, there was no car there, I had to send out a car across over. Now, the other morning, I was here at eight o'clock, there's nowhere to eat. There's nowhere in Summerfield to go to eat. You have to drive to Oak Ridge, to Bojangles, or go up in Greensboro, whatever that place is now on the right. You know what I'm talking about?
Dear Dad?
Yeah, well, there's, there's, what's the word, they used to be the seventy-five chicken.
Oh, jazz.
Jazz, yeah, so there you go, there is nothing in Greensboro, I mean, nothing in Summerfield. So, what, what I have grown, when I've come up here, what I have noticed is, there's nothing for kids. You need a place for kids to go. I was in Cary this weekend for a wedding. Downtown Cary, they have all kinds of events, people walking around, you know what I'm saying? There's so much to do, so much arts and everything. If you don't allow, if you don't allow, businesses coming here, with young kids coming here, this town's gonna die. I hate to say it, but it's gonna die. People that I grew up with lived in the Summerfield area, they moved out. They live, most of them live in Oak Ridge now. So, you know, and that may not be what you want, but I'm telling you, if you don't, if you don't, you know, give a little bit, that's what you're gonna see. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon. All right, I'm gonna massacre this one. So, this one's Andrew Sapias.
I'd say, but I sound up.
And I bet you, can you remind me how to pronounce your last name?
Yes, it's very easy, it's like a six-pack of beers, Z-Packs.
Thank you, Mr. Z-Packs.
Seven four nine five Whiteville. Right along over there, but I'm gonna reiterate what Mr. Brady talked about earlier, and it's, it's merit, goes along with what Brett had talked about with the barrier. Tom's concern, and it's my concern too, because I live right there, I'll see. If we do a fifty-foot burn, a fifty-foot section, and a eight-foot privacy fence, as it comes down the topography of the hill, well, you're gonna be below like my third floor. I can already see the top of the hill from my third floor, so that fence is not gonna do me any... Now, I'm a little further back, but Brett and the other folks that are closer, that fence is gonna do nothing for them. So, we should really, I propose we really have a site lamp, sound, and noise study dump, to reiterate if this plan does go forward, that we don't get impacted by the commercial side or the commercial aspect of this, because I build these commercial trucks, they're in there at two AM doing garbage dumps. That's when they load up the roll-off containers, they're in there, they're delivering, wrecker trucks are in there at that timeframe, so the amount of noise you get with that is significant. And to that, on top of that, Tom has it down to seventy feet. I can tell you it is beyond seventy feet. I know this because my leach field is on the corner right where the tunnel road supposedly comes up to, that map is not drawn right, because that road is really far from the corner of my property, because I know where my leach field is because I've repaired it several times now. So, it's about ninety feet, and I'm not quite at the top of the hill with my leach field. So, you're looking at at least a hundred foot from Whiteville Drive proper to the top level portion of that property that he's talking about. Would I have? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Hold on a second. Teresa Perry.
I just wanna let y'all know, it's hard as hearing back there because I don't have the Marshall phone set up. We can't hear back there.
The microphone is right there.
Yeah, but you still can hear. Teresa Perry, in seventy-four zero one hundred Long Drive. I wanted to know that I did attend the info meeting that was held at the power farm. Hang on, I'll... And a lot of people don't know this, I actually work for a survey company with engineer. And the very first thing I seen this, and he did say that in the near future, the town with the talent and told him in the near future that he could have water. And I'm looking at this plan, and that's what it looks like. Somebody who's going to get water, this, and then not relying on the water in our ground from our wells. And with that being said, uh, on the adjacent property of thirty-eight acres, they're going to put eighty-four new homes on thirty-eight acres. That's awesome. And what I kept hearing at the planning board meeting was, you know, talking about how Raleigh talks about, we don't work with developers, and we're not working with developers out here. That's all I kept hearing. Well, we don't pass our rezonings on Raleigh. We would pass them for our UDO purposes. It's got nothing to do with developers. And it's really not a true statement because if we have not worked with developers, then why do we have Elmer's? Why do we have Hanson Farms? Hanson Farms, aren't they, right? We keep going on with the assumptions that we have worked with developers. Now, a lot of people also don't know that because we don't have water and sewer, a lot of people compare it to Oak Ridge Commons. And I'm not even sure if the council's aware of this. But it sits on ninety acres. And forty-five acres is what you see. That's what you see up front, it's forty-five acres. What you don't see is the forty-five acres behind it, and there's where it is water and sewer. So it takes forty-five acres just to fill up the forty-five acres in Oak Ridge Commons. And I think that's it, other than the shrine thing and of course... I can do like this, it's on two-twenty, don't get me wrong. I totally agree with that, but I don't think the scope of this, that our water and, um, sewers ready for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Has Miss Stoker now, has she left?
Yes.
Okay, next would be, um, Rhonda Pedrosa.
Hi, my name's Rhonda Pedrosa, and I live at fourteen-ten NC Highway one-fifty West. I spoke at the county meeting. Where my house sits, the driveway in front of it is owned by a separate developer. Beyond that is the woods, which is where the outlet for all these shops is gonna be, which is gonna be a huge disruption to my house. We've been living there for ten years. My husband passed away at this house two years ago. I have a special needs son who doesn't wanna move. The thought of him building all these houses in front of me and to my side where the land wouldn't perk anyways. Back in the nineties, it wouldn't perk then, why would it perk now? Why, you know, I'm gonna have nine houses in front of my house instead of on the side. My son is upset about this. He's special needs, his dad died there, he doesn't wanna leave. I don't wanna leave. But the thought of having all these houses built around in the traffic, I mean, I've been hit, turning into my driveway. My son would be reminded by a flatbed truck, broken zones, got some cuts. Traffic flies up and down one-fifty, but it's... Last week, there was an accident at the intersection of one-fifty and two-twenty. And now you're talking about adding a ton more traffic to this area? I mean, it, it doesn't make sense to me. Greensboro's not that far. We have the shopping center, her, grocery store. You know, just like I said, I live right across from the vineyards, and that's where that main entrance is gonna be. To get back there, all the wildlife that was back there, the deer, everything that I've seen is gonna be disrupted because of these houses. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pedrosa. Uh, next, we have Michelle Ollman.
Good evening. Thirty-one hundred plus or a drink. Um, so I'm one of those people that Cal was talking about, and I'm not one of those people that he was talking about because I grew up in Summerfield, I moved over here when I came back. Um, so usually, I'm, I'm pretty hard at the NOCOM. But I've done quite a bit of studying, and we were on the UDO committee, and we researched the comp plan. And it's pretty clear that everybody thought that our commercial development should be centered on two-twenty. Uh, all three corners have commercial, um, development. And I think that it allows the comp plan. I think there's a, a lot of interest in having some variety in grocery, um, some variety and, you know, maybe restaurants. I, I do think that this is a suitable, uh, spot. I hope that this developer here will listen to the neighbors. He's already made some concessions. It sounds like they're asking for some more. Uh, I feel like he's been, uh, pretty amicable to make those agreements. Uh, he had, he removed all the, we moved all the conditions that I asked for last time, so thank you. I also sent him an email a couple of months ago, and one suggestion I made, and which I realized that the RS zoning has nothing to do with this. But in one of his promotional plans, it showed some duplexes or some townhomes, and it left quite a bit more, uh, red space around it. That would also help with the neighbors' concerns of the runoff and the, um, buffering and all that kind of thing. Uh, seems like a really good spot for it. He's already zoned RS thirty, so he has the densest zoning that we already have, so we, we can't change that. This is about the commercial rezoning. I have serious doubts, um, that he might get everything he wants, but I understand, and I read in his packet, that he has some sort of fancy packing septic system. Uh, I don't know if that would be infused in conjunction with the houses or whatever. But that may be a good solution to get us some of that variety of housing that we've also been wanting, some duplexes, some different varieties, maybe a little bit smaller scale. I'll ask if he would consider maybe marketing that. I think that would be a win-win for the neighbors, um, as well as the community. That's certainly a type that, um, we're supportive of. Uh, I hope that he will, um, consider using local businesses. And I would also like to hear him say that, yes, he fully intends to develop this property and that he has no intention to sell it. And is committed to seeing this through and continuing to work with the neighbors and making sure that if this is gonna be developed, that it's gonna be, uh, developed appropriately and in line with what the community has stated that they want through the comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Ms. Ollman. All right, let me give a shot at this. This is gonna be Jeff Lynn Minney. Jeff Lynn. Is he on, relieved? Okay. From Weizel Drive. Okay. Now, he's decided not to speak. I believe that's gonna be it. Uh, thank you, everybody, for... Somebody in the back.
Can I speak?
Right, Mr. Crawford, come on.
Wayne Crawford, eleven oh-six. There's a speaker somewhere. Uh, Wayne Crawford, eleven oh-six, NC Highway one-fifty West. I was on the comp plan committee for the full term, three years, whatever, and Dr. Sutton people alluded to it. I was there. We talked about how with two-twenty, where we said it, there's nobody commercial. That's where we want to put this commercial. Answer your question for me. We're...